I know, but I always want to make, because he's
He's got to hit it.
A couple of different ways. Great. Welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the Masco Regional Committee meeting of Wednesday, March 23rd, 2:00 PM. Welcome. I have a couple of remarks, just one real quick note. I want all the comments to make sure you mark them down. We need to take a change on our meeting schedule. So we have some scheduled for May 18th right now, and we're changing that to May 25th. Just touch base with me if you have any issue with that date, but I wanted to make sure that was announced. It's the one meeting in March.
Yes.
May.
That's the reorganization meeting in May.
Just to confuse you guys and make sure you were listening. So, May 25th will be our meeting instead of the 18th. So, this week is the first, the beginning of spring, lots of excitement and refreshing energy. But I also just wanted to make a note, I think people have been making this note all month, that it's kind of marks the two-year mark since the pandemic came and shut down schools and businesses and everything, travel worldwide in that unprecedented event. And we're coming out now, it feels, on the other side of it. But I feel like part of the healing and moving on, it's just also remembering those that were lost during that time. We have had family members and dear friends of Masco nomics, families and faculty who were lost during those two years of COVID-19. So I actually just wanted to ask if we could take a short moment of silence, just to remember All right. So, of course, we want any families that were impacted to know that there's resources here, and you can always reach out to anyone you know in the community for that. It's a very supportive community that way. So then, now as we're kind of moving past that healing part, there's spring and a lot of celebration and joyful times. So I just want to congratulate the, anyone who worked on the musical in Greece that performed this past week. I think, I don't know if this is a fact, but being a Masco alum and having been in the community for so long, I think we may have had an unprecedented attendance rate of sold-out overflow seating at every performance. And there were people being turned away at the door, standing ovations throughout the entire performance that lasted long, much longer than a typical applause. So to me, that's just a whole community celebrating and celebrating hard. I know we've been seeing that at other events and so forth, but that was our first in-person performance since the pandemic. So I want to congratulate everyone who pulled that off with great success. And another, among the other returns of fun things, is the all-night grad party is going to be happening again this year. This is a tradition that's been going on for over 50 years, five decades at Masco Nomics. That is an all-night celebration following graduation for our graduating seniors. And it relies heavily on volunteers. So I wanted to just put a plug out there. I'm gonna, let me do our summary notes, ask that we include the link to volunteering. Basically, the Triton Council organizes it, and they need volunteers of seniors, sophomores and freshmen, parents, parents of those students, to chaperone. So there's lots of different shifts and lots of different jobs that you can do. And they also need, like EMTs, nurses or doctors, to take shifts over the course of the night, because they want to have, they always have somebody there with the students throughout the whole night, the graduates throughout the whole night. I have done it a few times, and it's kind of nice, because you get a glimpse of what your senior will get when they graduate. And then it's a pay-it-forward volunteer opportunity where you then get to rest easy when your student is graduating and celebrating, knowing that they're safe and celebrating with their peers. So we'll include that link, and would really love to see lots of volunteering. I think that's all for today's comments from me. So we're moving into comments from the audience. Just a reminder that it's not a question-and-answer dialogue, but it's an opportunity to share opinions. And when you do come, if you have a comment, to state your name and your town. Do you have any comments from the audience tonight? Okay. All right, we do not, looks like. I see no hands being raised. Now, we're moving on to a Student Advisory Board update. Tonight, we have Olivia Richards here.
Hi, I'm Olivia Richards, a sophomore class SAB. Everything's been going really well, and Student Council is having elections, which are coming up, which is a big deal. And we're currently working on a St. Patrick's Day event for senior citizens, or making raffle baskets, just something that we worked on at our last meeting. And we also worked on making Ukraine flag pins for, to give out to people in the school to bring to light what is going on, and in support of Ukrainian refugees and people. In this past week, we had an assembly with Dr. Willard, who spoke to the students about mental health and how important it is for teenagers. After the assembly, some Student Council members met with Dr. Willard to further address teens' mental health at Masco. And for this conversation, we brought members from both the middle school and high school Student Council. And yeah, that's what's been going on with Student Council.
Yeah. Thank you. Questions for Olivia? It's nice to have the updates feel so normal. Good stuff. All right. So tonight, at our end of the year, we invite all of our state legislators. So because we are a regional school committee, and a couple of our towns have more than one representative, we end up having quite a few. So we invited, I want to say six or seven. Do we have seven?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
All right, so seven, two senators and five representatives. And several have arrived. I think others might be joining as we're talking, so hopefully they'll just chime right in. I, there's, we haven't had a typical one of these in so long, so I'm not sure the best way to do this. I would love to, what we do is, if you want to be captured on the microphone for anyone watching from home, we ask that you stand close, kind of close to that table. There's a microphone on the corner that catches sound. I don't know if you want to come up together, or if you want to take turns.
Yeah, sure. Do it the panel style. Sure.
So if you would also, when you do come up, just
Let you know who we are. I get where you're going. I think, I'm not sure if we recognize them all, but it's been a while. It's been a while, and I know most of us are used to Zoom being a GPH show, and then get used to it being something else for a while, so. I'm Representative Jones, so officially, I represent part of Middleton. Oh, my colleague, I can tell you. Thank you. So I represent Middleton with Representative Kearns right now, and will, the district stays, I still have Middleton, the proposed district. So I've been a rep for a while, and I was a local official, so I appreciate what you go through. This is my, sort of my one regional school district. So I think obviously everybody's got the budget process, and I'll touch just briefly on that, and then give it over to my colleagues. So we expect the week of, you know, April 11th, the state budget will come out from the House Ways and Means, per effective, by the end of that week, amendments will be due. Then usually, we take school vacation week to sift through all the amendments, and my guess is we'll probably have 1,000 or 1,200 or 1,300 amendments this year to go through, and then take them up the last full week, the budget in the House, the last full week of April. And then the Senate is basically a month ahead of that, and then the month of June, hopefully, is reconciling the two versions. I think the good thing for us is that from where we thought we would be probably two years ago, 18 months ago, we're financially, as a Commonwealth, a lot better off than any of us thought we would be. And revenues are coming in at a very healthy clip. So hopefully, that allows us to address some of the needs that are out there, that we didn't necessarily know that we would be able to address when, I think, when the pandemic started. And I think you touched on the fact that updates are different than they were, and nice to be back to normal. But I do think that the pandemic has laid bare. I know even before it hit, there was a lot of talk about sort of the mental health aspects of school considerations and things, about counseling and this and that. And obviously, the pandemic has only kind of laid that bare, maybe exacerbated it, and certainly heightened the attention, and I think that's something that we all need. I've had some of the civics groups, I represent the town of Linfield, and they had, we had a big civics project, and a lot of the students broke them into small groups, and probably three or four of the groups focused on, the student groups focused on the idea of having different avenues for counseling for all kinds of issues that young people may face in school, in the community. And they've since followed up, and I think that's something that we're going to have to make part, a bigger part of the discussion, potentially a bigger part of the discussion as we talk about what follows on to the Student Opportunity Act, and how we address some of those regions. That's just one issue amongst many. I know, regional school transportation, Chapter 70, minimum aid. You guys may be, this year, maybe a minimum aid committee, a lot, three out of my four towns are, get minimum aid this year. And I met with the Chair Ways and Means just yesterday, and I think that the idea of trying to maybe make that minimum aid per pupil dollar go higher would actually bring a lot of those communities up that are a very, very small increase. And not a kind of increase that would let them keep pace with everything. And the last issue I'll touch on before I turn over, I also know there's an increasing discussion now with inflation and fuel costs, but what that's going to translate into, whether it's school transportation, facility, you know, heating and electrical and so on and so on, and that's starting to percolate up too. So that's something we're going to have to face as communities, as schools, and as a Commonwealth. So I'll pass it off now, so.
Amy Sally.
Before you guys go on, I just want to
First term is, oh, everyone who's joined us, so come on up. So thank you all very much. I am Sally Kearns. I represent Danvers, Middleton Precinct 2, West Peapody Ward 6. And in the next coming year, I hope to be representing Topsfield as the very weird redistricting plan switches things up. And I just want to say how great this rep is doing for your community, diving right in, you know, right at it on advocating for Topsfield, Middle, or Topsfield, it's switching your six other towns.
Oh, it's a test later on, Sally.
I know my five. So, so thank you very much. I just want to say, Olivia, great job presenting. I have a soft spot in my heart for High School Student Council. I was, probably everyone here was in the Student Council. Was that obvious?
It's great to hear the work that you're doing.
I have had conversations with two students from Masco who approached me specifically about the issue of mental health and mental wellness. And great news that the House is going to be putting together its mental health bill to complement and kind of be braided in along with the Senate bill. And then the governor has some proposal out, so all by way of saying, it is all eyes on behavioral health, mental wellness, and youth mental health is going to get particular focus in the bill that's being worked on in the House. And so, stay tuned on that one. In terms of the budget process, I just echo what Brad has had to say. This begins the sort of the proceedings of the budget, and you know, when you're talking about a $47, $46 billion document, there are so many, many priorities. The wonderful part of what we're doing now is how interactive it can be, and the Ways and Means hearings, everyone can follow along. Go to the state website, find the Mass Legislature, look at events, and the hearings will come up, and you can follow along. So by far, right, Chapter 70, the transportation issue, the circuit breaker, the regional transportation issue. So I have a district that, you're the only regional school district. But I do recall very fondly, when I represented Topsfield in the past, I don't think I mentioned that, but when I was in the legislature a really long time ago.
I was about Olivia's age, actually. I represented We were, we were in junior high, yeah. I represented Topsfield, and I remember vividly, Topsfield is a town that prizes education. I know you all know that. It's why you maybe chose to live here. I know that, I appreciate that. And the other town that I'm adding to, I hope, to this district will be, is Wenham, also prizes Education.
All towns do, but I have to say, and I don't think anyone would quibble with it, that Masco is a very, people here are very serious about their education. That's why you're all here. We're here to support the good work that you're all trying to do in navigating not only the pandemic, but very challenging times in, in education. And I just want to say shout out to all of you. I don't think there's a harder job than being on a school committee for the past two years. I just don't. So kudos for enduring it and for giving it your best. I'm hoping to hear from some of you tonight. I know that the Mass Association of School Committees will be meeting with us. We will hear from the Mass Association of School Superintendents on their priorities. You know, as Brad mentioned, the SOA will be a focus, but then there's also the individual needs of your communities, of your schools. So please, you know, find me. How am I doing?
Be careful of what you wish for.
All right, fair enough. And with that, Belsito and
Thank you so much. I am so grateful to be back here. I think it's my third time that I've been here, I believe so. And again, want to echo the same sentiments that we, that I've said previously, is thank you for your volunteership. This, this job only comes from the heart to put yourself out there, to get signatures and put yourself in a ballot, and, and represent your communities for the sum of $0. And I say that because it is, it is due to passion in putting your heart into your community, and want to say, I'm sure no one anticipated coming into where we are, and continue to reside in this space. So I am Representative Jamie Zalloway-Belsito, and I am a Topsfieldian. I will have a seventh grader come the fall, and look forward to participating in more, in the granular level here. I represent four regional schools, so this is always, regional schools are always in my kind of conversation at all turns. I am a part of the Rural and Regional School Caucus, where we've come together to say we need to make sure that we're getting our regional transportation funded. I was told, and perhaps it's, it's me and my green back on this, that we will be seeing anticipated 90% plus reimbursement. And that was from the state, and I was told that by
Jessica?
Jessica Lee.
Jessica Lee.
D E S C?
And, you know, this is a big issue for Western Mass, and what's used at regional, et cetera. My point is, is that there's a lot of regional schools, Hamilton, one, Manchester, Essex, Triton, and so making sure that I continue this mantra in the halls, because it's incredibly important, and all of the things that my esteemed minority leader, Pia, the gentleman from North Reading, has spoken about. I come from a mental health policy background from the federal level. It's something I've been working on for years with the, with Senate, with the House, and we're looking at doing another Mental Health Reboot 2.0, but that filters down into our state. And I will just echo the fact that it's, it's always been about mental health. I think that COVID, you know, maybe we were all looking at our devices for too many hours during the day, I don't know what. But the long story short is this, I'm a big proponent of PIA support. I think that that is something that is huge. I think when folks know that they're not alone, it's not just them that can always take the flames out of, out of a burning fire. I will let you know that your esteemed chair, my dear friend, Zilly, Buju, and I were on a national call last night directed towards youth mental health, and it is all things, right? It's early education, it's supporting new families, it's giving folks the opportunity to get back to work, it's investing in our schools, it's investing in our communities, it's using kind words, it's using respectful discourse, and it's taking care of each other. And I look forward to be a continued part of that conversation as a parent and as a legislator elected in this community. I want to also say, kudos to my dear neighbor, our babysitter, Ava Berenger, for her poet laureate award that she received. It's nothing but amazing work that comes out of this Masco Nomics High School. And I am very blessed, not only to cut the amazing lilacs that are growing out of the back of her house during the month of May, but have, have her and her wonderful family as my neighbors. And I would like to wrap with this. In February was Black History Month, and this is a month for us to celebrate our leaders in our communities, both at a national level and a state level and a local level. And I took the most easy way out of nominating somebody who is a leader in our community, and that's Bill Hodges. And I just wanted to say that, you know, oh my God, you know I love your wife. I love you, and I am
Her first, I'm sure.
I want to say, thank you so much for your leadership. We are, statistic-wise, a 94% white community. I know that's shocking, probably, Bill, to you to hear that. But I do want to say that you've taken on the, the issues that we, I'm an Arab, Arab American, first Arab American elected to the state legislature, and I only say that because sometimes representation does matter. And I want to say thank you for taking that on, so that everyone can feel good wherever they are. And that's something I think that the school community does well. So I would like to take this moment, drum roll, please. I'm like, what am I going to drum? So I have a house for. I would like to give you the citation. Okay. Okay. But for your, as I stated, your calm voice as a member of this Masco Nomics School Committee. You are an inspiration to me, you should be an inspiration to me, and I thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
100%.
Let me come over with the video.
Is there more?
I think there's a photo opportunity.
Photo.
I'll crop you out, don't worry.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. Please know that these conversations don't end here. We are always available to hop on the phone or come back at any time. And I will now pass the baton to my dear colleague, the gentlewoman from North Andover, no, Andover. Sorry, I didn't want to insult you.
Who also represents Foxford. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, I don't know how to follow that. I don't know how to follow my esteemed colleagues here with everything that they had to say already, other than to say, I'm Tram Wing, State Representative, going to, well, this is my second term now, so really, you're the newest, but I'm still learning, and I'm here to continue to learn with you. Great to see you. But really, such, this is so important for us to continue to have this conversation. I'm just so thrilled that you're inviting us here as a state delegation to listen to what you are looking for, to make sure that you have the resources for our students. And as someone who represents Andover, North Andover, Tuxray, and just one precinct of Foxford, but I have to say, I'm here a lot, so it's not that, you know, I love all my children the same. My children, so like, I go to all the different towns equally, no matter the size of representation. But as someone who, I continue to come to Foxford and hear the needs and talk to the students, I have to say, Foxford students are very engaged, and kudos to you all for fostering not only that sense of desire to learn, but community service and desire to give back. And that's exactly what we want to continue to work with you, to provide those resources that your students can continue to learn and grow. And as someone who comes, I've come to this building many times to present to the student government club, and had the pleasure of learning about the things that they care about, mental health is certainly top of list, but also healthy relationships. What does that mean to be able to teach them to treat each other well? And what does it mean for us to have, to build that welcoming, inclusive and supportive community for our students? And so, as someone, I was an attorney prior to getting elected, and I did a lot of work in the areas of domestic violence and sexual assault, so that has been a priority of mine in, in conversations with students. We want to foster those types of healthy relationships from the very beginning, and we want to partner with you to make sure that we do address those issues. And how do we not only help our students recover, go back to the classroom, but to thrive, coming back and building, rebuilding some of those relationships, and making sure that we are there to support them? And so, we're here as partners. I had a whole list of things, like budget-wise, and I'm pretty sure my colleagues have gone through them already, whether it's like fully funding the Student Opportunity Act, or regional transportation, or making sure that we are fully funding the circuit breaker. Those are commitments of mine to you all, to continue to work with you, to fund those necessary dollars, so that you have all that you need for, for your schools. And so, you have my contact, please continue to reach out, and also, please continue to have these more regularly, because we want to continue to hear from you. And so, I, I was supposed to keep going until Bruce gets here.
If we do really well, we'll be done before Bruce talks.
Yes, but, thank you.
That's our cue. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. I really appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
The committee, I see one hand up already.
I'm glad to hear, you know, the comments about, you know, raising, you know, the minimum, you know, aid. Because, you know, that, over the years, you know, the state has done a remarkably poor job of, you know, funding education.
Yes.
Our local taxpayers have gone from funding 65% of the Masco budget to 82% over the last 20 years. You know, and, and in addition, you know, to having to spend more on education, state government, you know, imposes more and more unfunded mandates on the local communities. You know, regional transportation was supposed to be funded 100%. It never has been. You know, you know, maybe this year, we'll get there. Increase, you know, minimum aid, but not just for one year. Make a commitment to continue increasing it, you know, you know, into the future. That will make, you know, a difference. Stop with these unfunded mandates, and some of them are unintended consequences. You know, that local taxpayers have only so much money. They can't be putting more money to funding their education system and paying for all of these, you know, mandates. The latest of one that will impact all three towns, you know, is the multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities. What sense does that legislation make for communities like ours or for Ashby, which is a MBTA community, but is nowhere near any public transportation? And if you don't comply with that, you risk losing state grants. So
I do want to speak to that very briefly, and I'm sure my colleagues have their own thoughts. I want to let everyone know, in conjunction with your towns, and I can't speak to Foxford, nor can I speak to Middleton, but with all of my communities. We did partner for the open comment period, which, Mr. Printakis, if you've not yet done so, by all means, please, it closes on the 31st of March, and these are all issues that we need to be speaking about. It's the greater picture. Yes, do we need housing affordability? Absolutely. Do we need more resources for folks to move to our communities, you know, under, let's say, $850,000 probably? But your, your point is well taken. Thank you.
And the Select Board in Middleton last night authorized, you know, a letter to Secretary Keenley on this very topic.
Great. God, I'm glad to hear that. That's exactly, that's right.
I will ask Andy to send each of
I'm frankly not surprised yours was the first hand up, though. I anticipated that, so.
No, shouldn't.
I am much more calm and moderate than, you know, six years when I really led into your
And worn down.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Tasha. So I was happy to hear that, that mental health is your priority, kind of, I think it's an assumption at this point, that it, there's, you know, a crisis going on, and we need more help. Obviously, dollars are going to help that, but my, my bigger concern is that where are all these counselors and mental health people coming from? And I'm hoping that some dollars are being put to, whether they're minority populations that want to go into fields of counseling, social populations that want to go into fields of counseling, social work, psychology, whatever, or wherever. But I, we need, we need people. I mean, in every industry at this point, we need, we need people, and I don't know where they are. But I'm hoping that we can find some and that some of the work that you do for this is helping develop people so that they can help us.
The workforce development component of this problem is going to be it's going to be, it's going to receive a lot of attention. How will we attract people to the work of counseling and mental health? Counseling occupations, the community colleges, I think, are going to play a key role in this. I was at North Shore Community earlier today. Any of the schools that have an allied health program, that's a nice fit. And I think that the House Committee on Mental Health, on which I sit, we're going to be focusing on youth mental health and the workforce, because you're so right. That's the challenge. And, you know, I'm sure you've all heard about the crisis in emergency departments with with kids boarding. And it's not so much they don't have beds, they don't have the staffing for the beds. So that's a very, very serious puzzle piece to be to be worked on so that we can fill those jobs and start to get people into the work of working with people who are in need of mental health support.
Thank you. And as the vice chair of the Labor and Workforce Committee and a member of the Mental Health Committee, we've been discussing whether that is reimbursement rates, because a lot of folks are not even taking, you know, mass health or other, or non-private insurance, but also in terms of, to your point about developing the workforce, we have to talk about grants and helping them with their student loans and whether that means allowing them to, if they work a certain amount of years in the service, to reimburse them and X amount. It's all up in the air, but there is great focus in it. And that is why the, we need to hear from you and we need to hear from others that this is necessary. You know, like, we're all sitting here saying that is very necessary, but we need to hear it from you all. That, you know, we're in a grave in here, but the rest of the legislature, I don't know if anyone knows this, but we have over seven thousand bills filed in the legislature at recession. And so if there are particular bills relating to this issue that you are particularly interested in, please reach out. Please submit testimony. Please share stories, because that's how we help percolate these bills to the top so that we can actually take action and make sure that we continue to address this issue.
Just like an example that that has been happening in Masco, so the director, I think that's the title, Director of Guidance, Irene Duros, had spoke to us a few months ago about some grants that she's received. And one of it was kind of doing some kind of screening on all students, because doesn't everybody need a screening at this point? It helps find kids that are suffering silent and all that. But she was afraid to set that up until they know that they can do something with it on the other end. And 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 that's hard. I mean, nobody can find counselors now, so.
There's two things I will speak to. And we have a lot of work to do in a short period of time. But I would like to share in speaking with the Undersecretary of Labor and Workforce. Today, speaking about mental health, we have a very interesting approach in the Commonwealth, like we do with many things. And right now, we're seeing grants go through Mass Hires, which is our equivalent of like the Department of, you know, Unemployment Training, right? And Salem State, of which I'm a grad. I think it's the best public university. Thank you, fellow Viking. Number Ogden. I've done more with my sixteen thousand dollars that I paid for on my own than most people that I know. And I say that because you can, you get out of it what you put into it. But they are partnering with Mass Hires and Mass General, which is another conversation, to do some tuition reimbursement for students that are in the mental health field and are utilizing that as a workforce development opportunity with the public university system. Okay? I also want, and that's something that we need to continue to model, because there is that partnership there. The Senate bill has insurance parity.
Chair Buju.
Still thirty years ago, we had no legislature.
We're still talking.
We're still talking of parity.
But the payout, the payout, right? And so we need, that has to be the focal point. That was the message last, what's been the message forever. And thirdly, B R Y T program, Bright Program. Okay, I see that Ipswich participates in this. I see that Hamilton, one of them participates in this. Linfield did something phenomenal with youth mental health. I think it was about two, three years ago. There are programs out there. I would encourage, put the fingers to the, you know, my email, Costas, you know, you know, all of us. Let's have that discussion or that feedback as to how to integrate some services or how we can help uplift that. Because it's always the chicken or the egg, right? Do we diagnose and say, oh, that's, you know what, you've got anxiety. Thank God, we figured out what that is. We just can't do anything about it. And that's not where we want folks to be, whether it's our seniors, to ourselves, to our kids. And but I think that we have some opportunities there, and your feedback is very helpful. And there are solutions. We don't have to recreate the wheel. We just have to get the wheel a little bit wider.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for sharing.
I'm glad to hear that. That's, I know, I've only been on this committee this past year, but I'm a psychologist and I've worked in so long in the private schools currently. And I can say from, well, you know, fifteen years ago, when I was a school psychologist in a public school, this, the ratio of students to staff with licensed clinicians was outrageous. And I would have, I would have my door open and shut twenty four, you know, the whole time I was at work and never feel like I was really able to dig in. And I think it's still a problem in public schools, and I can't speak for all schools. But the ratio of licensed clinicians that are available to carry a caseload for kids that need counseling, kids that need evaluation, kids that need, you know, program-wide data collection for mental health, where school psychologists has that training, it's it's too low. And I know, I can only say that upon reflection, being in a smaller setting that serves this population, where you really kind of look back and say, you can't be that effective, because you're putting out fires all day. You're not able to really kind of dig in a little bit and really get to know your caseload of students. So I just think that would be important to be thinking about, how can we help public schools? This one in particular, but just look at how can we help support and fund more mental health clinicians that can really change for the better?
Very helpful to hear that.
And I would agree, things are getting much worse. Much worse. It's another crisis that's growing.
It started before the pandemic and pandemic.
So I think it's, you should go ahead. I, as a percentage of your time, when you were, when you were a school psychologist, what, like, my impression is that a school psychologist is spending a lot of their time, most of their time testing. Am I mistaken?
So the training programs now, and I say now, twenty years ago, going forward to present, are focused on equal skill sets of testing, mental health consultation with your colleagues and counseling. So the older model is you just do testing. But most of the programs do all three areas so that you can be a part of leading the data collection for mental health survey and things like that. So kind of a broader scale response to intervention. But then they also have the testing, and so more of a building-based model where you're doing multiple roles. So I just think it's really important, because I do think that's the perception, that you're just coming, you're coming in, you're doing the testing, and then you leave. But it can be much more preventative.
At our school, the school psychologists are doing testing mostly.
Yeah.
Yes. And we have adjustment counselors who are doing counseling. I still, I still feel
But we can't find more adjustment counselors. That's, money isn't even necessarily the issue at this point. It's finding
It's the people. Yeah.
So if I can add one more note to that before we introduce Senator Tar, while we're talking about mental health. So you you commented, and you're right, we should be telling you, like, which things our priorities are. But I'm hoping that this counts as doing that as well. And I will say this topic, Patty has definitely, like, we, everybody, I think, at this table at some point has commented about this topic being a priority. So I was so happy that that was the first thing you came out with, because you're right, all those other, you know, SOA, Chapter Seventy.
Right.
Absolutely. But this is the topic that we hear is is really at the forefront, as you opened with. And just two thoughts for your awareness, like, one is that it is kind of consistently, we hear, one parent said, and I think this was, this is a good way of thinking about it, is we've educated our students and our families and our staff enough to know that there's no stigma about talking about it, right? Share how you're feeling. Let us know what's going on. So now we have all these people that are opening up their vulnerabilities, and they're finding empathetic ears. And then everyone says, okay, so we did this part that we're learning about. Now the next step, and then you look to the next step, and there's this giant gap, because the resources aren't there. So it doesn't start in school and it doesn't end in school. Schools are a really important touch point for all our young people. But I think it's also networking schools to outside, those outside resources, not just having them, but having, building the networks and partner organizations. So I I often think about the Tri-Town Council, because I think their model is so great, about preventative work, educating families and staff and building up as much as we can so we don't get to the crisis point. So we have less students getting to the point where they need beds as opposed
That's right.
Right, on every other week session. And then knowing where to go, knowing where, already knowing that information quicker, so that a parent isn't making fifty phone calls. But an organization says, we already know that this place has two counselors that have openings. That's the two phone calls you're going to make. So those are my thoughts for you.
As a parent of a high school and a college student, and and just thinking back to the days in elementary school, you know, bullying, and and now it's cyberbullying, and how social media, and just as legislator, as a parent, trying to keep up with, you know, Instagram, Snapchat, Facebook, TikTok, everything that's sort of like, oh, my God.
Are we missing anything?
To then try to understand it, to then try to interact in a productive way, meaningful way, and realize, you know, as a student, I mean, God bless students today dealing with it. It just, you know, to feel excluded online, included online, bullied online, and to think before bullying was, okay, some face-to-face interaction on a schoolyard, and, okay, that seems like in in hindsight would have been so easy to deal with. I wish that was the only problem we were. But how that's elevated and been exacerbated by social media and technology and trying to keep up with that. And then obviously, the pandemic has increased some substance abuse issues too across the board, and all of those things kind of intersecting. And the good thing is we have, there's resources to deal with it. There's no one answer to all of it, but we have to continue the conversation, because, believe me, if there was one right answer to all of it, we would do it all in a heartbeat. The problem is if there's, there's a lot of answers, there's a lot of problems and a lot of answers.
Bravo, and welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Representative. I just got a nice picture of all of you speaking to the school committee, so.
Kudos to, you're doing something very right, because there's a Middleton, there's a Boxford, excuse me, a Masco student from Middleton, who's going to be doing a one-month internship in my office, and this is going to be her focus. And then another young man, I don't know what year he is, came up to me at an event in Middleton and asked about, what are you doing on mental health and mental wellness? So at least in this community, this is very much on everyone's radar, to have two students reach out with such a specific area of interest. So that's a very good thing. And, you know, make sure you seek out, it's Jacqueline Bazaz, she's going to be doing an internship. And so if you have, you know, if you have ideas, if you have thoughts, send them to her, and then we'll try to incorporate some of these. You've clearly done a lot of the groundwork, so let's build upon that.
Okay.
Okay, Bruce. First of all, good evening. It's nice to see all of you, and it's nice to be here in person to be able to talk with all of you, because we haven't been able to do this in a while, and it's nice to do it tonight. And I'm not sure why my colleagues are backing up. You can see what I have to go through. But I, but I would say, and I'm coming in the middle of conversation, but I would also say that there are some financial ramifications to what we're talking about as well. Because one of the issues that we've been grappling with as legislators from this region for a while now is the issue of rising costs and decreasing enrollment. And so oftentimes, when we deal with the Ways and Means Committees and we deal with finance committees and others, they will say to us, well, how come the costs are increasing and and why are you asking for more money? And the thing that's become clear, and it's actually become clear to us through the work of the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, is that because the student body is becoming more complex and their social emotional needs are becoming more intensive. Now, the first manifestation of that conversation actually resulted in something that was unrelated to mental health in in many ways. It had to do with the bargain that we're able to strike with regard to including special needs transportation in the circuit breaker. Our argument was the the level of intensity of special needs education has grown so much that if we're going to do something for schools across the Commonwealth, we cannot do it without including a component for regional, for regular sped transportation, rather, as opposed to regional school transportation. We were successful with that. The new frontier that we find ourselves in is clearly social emotional learning. And it's something that, as my colleagues have said, is intensifying, and it's almost intensifying by the day. And it has a number of different problems. So first of all, and you're to be congratulated for what you are all doing in the school district, is that we're asking our teachers and our professionals to assume a lot of the role of providing mental health services when their day is already filled with so many other things. And so we're stretching folks incredibly, and we're stretching their ability to do all the things that we're asking them to do. So one of the issues that we all are thinking about is what we can do to help you build capacity in those areas, so that we can get folks back in their lanes a little bit more, to be able to educate during the day and do things as professionals and paraprofessionals that they need to do during the day. But the other thing that's really significant, and and we've been hearing this a lot, I just heard it here right now, is that there's a certain assumption that if a school district does the right amount of screening and identifies a need and de-stigmatizes the need to ask for help, then what happens next? And then what happens next is oftentimes you're waiting for a warm handoff for a professional that is not in the school system, who isn't there. And so there's a discontinuity in the spectrum of how we're addressing this issue. And we're keenly aware of that, and it's manifesting itself in different ways. Number one, there aren't enough providers to begin with. Number two, the providers that are out there are overstressed. Number three, many of the providers are very limited in terms of what they'll accept for payment, which is excluding whole elements of our population from being able to have access. And we repeatedly in our offices are getting calls, I had another one today, from a parent who had a student in in an emergency room for eleven or twelve days. And that's on the lower end of what we've been hearing from the folks who are calling. So this is clearly an area that we all have to focus on. Representative Belcito and I had asked the Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce to to gather together the Cape Anne communities, the Cape Anne municipal districts, to talk about this. And it was amazing how robust the conversation was. And and much of what I'm relaying to you is what we heard in those discussions. And so what we've asked them, and we would ask you as well, is to help us identify some things that we can do that would actually be effective with the ability that we may have to fund some extra things because of the current financial position that we find ourselves in. It seems to me that like school transportation for special education was a few years ago, social emotional learning is today. And if we identify the right targets, we might be able to be successful in really making an impact on this. Now, the other thing is, I know there's a little bit of a House-Senate rivalry going on here, but I'm not going to try to further this, but thank you. But I would say this, the Senate a while ago did a sweeping mental health bill. And and part of what it was focused on is trying to look at pediatric mental health. And and one of the specific things it tries to do is look at building treatment bed capacity for pediatric mental health, because we just are in a situation where the kids have nowhere to go. So that's number one. The bill also looks at trying to find out why providers are limiting what they're accepting for payment and what we can do to change that. It also looks at trying to, every three years, and I actually amended the bill, it was going to be five, I amended it to make it three, to look at the entire mental health system and the pediatric mental health system every three years, so that we don't mental health system and the pediatric mental health system every three years so that we don't fall out of alignment the way that we have now. And I know that my House colleagues are gonna take this very seriously when they take this bill up. And, and because we've had those conversations. And I'm hoping that they'll be able to build on what we were able to do in the Senate and together we'll be able to get an even stronger bill to the desk of the government.
The speaker just today. We're gonna be doing.
That will complement.
Oh, we can talk about that later. The point is that the moment is now. Like we, we did a bill, these folks are gonna do a bill and we have the ability to do something really spectacular. And then in the budget, maybe we can add some supports. I think the time might be right for us to think about that.
So I know that these guys are really worried about me going on too long. It's, it's interesting. The town of Redding, their resource officers, they just have, they have two, their resource officers now have comfort dogs in the schools.
I saw that.
And, you know, they're puppies and then there was a school naming thing. And, and in the town of Redding, there's, at a local level, there's been a lot of disagreements amongst local officials. This is sort of the one thing that brought all parties together.
Comfort dogs will do the trick.
You know, that way it was a way maybe of easing the interaction of students with a resource officer and to the extent that, you know, animals can provide emotional and just as a way of facilitating a conversation and identifying other issues. So there's just, and that's why I say there's not necessarily one right answer in any district. There may be a multitude of things that we need to provide support for. And that was the, the dogs and the communities raised the money to shelter and house the dogs. They made fundraising and was not raise thousands of dollars to, to pay for the ducks. So a lot of different, different ideas, none of which is, there's no, there's no, nobody's caught in the marketplace on what the exact answer is. So.
You got the right team, yeah. You really do.
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna put everything we can and it's not gonna be a one shot. It's gonna be, but we are gonna do what we can to identify this. And we're gonna ask for every dime that we can for the, for the school. Just know you've got, you've got an A-team here.
Yeah, thank you. This has been really encouraging. I mean, you guys are all singing the same song in harmony and it's on par with what we are all feeling that we need, so.
I do want to just put this out here, from my own personal and professional standpoint, we don't do bipartisan politics in Massachusetts. We work together. And that's what this is all about.
No, we do do bipartisan.
We do do bipartisan.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, I don't wanna get the minority leader. But I think it speaks volumes that there is a, a, we work very well together, I guess is my point. And we're not here to spite, to cut our nose to spite our faces. It's about you folks. It's not about bipartisan politics. Right? So thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we operate at a level where it's, you know, personally relationships and that. And look, we can have disagreements. But our inability to agree on everything shouldn't prevent us from working together on some things. And these are important things.
These are big, yes.
But I think the fact that, you know, maybe I brought it up first, everybody's amplified it and it's sort of been a thread through almost all the universal questions. Um, I think speaks to the importance of the issue.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. I agree.
So Patty, can I, can I just add that I'm so happy that the priority is mental health and so.
How do you love hearing that?
Who you are. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. And so my department is special ed, school counselors, adjustment counselors. And that's been the, the work we've been doing over the last two years of um, professional development, working together to our goal is to have a comprehensive mental health systems. And so we're trying the hard work. And I just wanna shout out to all of my folks that um, they're working hard and I actually got a couple of texts because they're listening. We're very fortunate that all of our school adjustment counselors are licensed mental health clinicians.
And Costas, remember that he's all on board as long as it's not an unfunded mandate.
You know, given, you know, the, the discussion about, you know, not being able to find the people to meet this need. Well, feeling of getting the people, expanding the capacity doesn't happen over.
Right. And that's why we have to have the conversation and do something because it takes some time.
And, you know, so some money needs to be put into expanding the capacity. But, you know, in the meantime, give the schools more money to, and not just tied to mental health, because they, then they can't spend it because they can't hire the people that need it. Sort of just generally give them, you know, more money.
Actually, we did that in the either our budget, we worked on this, it was tri-town. Or a mental health, student mental health initiative, I think. So that's so important is making sure, you know, left hand, right hand.
Yeah.
We also need to, and again, I only have one regional school district, so to the extent there are need to be different approaches or different issues, so from a regional school district versus a district. And I know there can be, for lack of a better terms, occasionally turf wars or problems that come up. Um, and that's something that we need to be aware of. I'm, I'm you know, obviously we all have our vocational schools and there are sometimes some frictions for vocational schools where students are going and programming.
Yeah.
But ultimately we all need to realize that we should all have sort of the end goal and that's to, to, to educate students and make sure that doing so in a healthy, safe environment that allows them to get the most out of their education and position them to succeed.
I, I did wanna add, thank you for mentioning that. I did ask for fifty thousand dollars for tri-town.
For the tri-town council? Yeah.
That is something, I mean, there we're gonna continue the conversation.
And they partner really well with the school. So a lot of the screenings and things that, that have been mentioned are all in partnership. So it is getting close to eight o'clock, but I, I, I just have to, I, I wanted to acknowledge it.
Talk for forty-five minutes.
We have a whole meeting ahead of you, sorry.
That's all right, but.
And Bruce will be here for ten minutes. Thank you, Costas. Appreciate that. And maybe that's makes the fact that maybe we should come back.
Not waiting.
I mean, if you guys, we should, we should remember that you guys all have um, often have office hours and coffees and things that we can come to. But again, just that big takeaway, like Patty's mentioned it, but the department, she said we've been, they've been working on it the past two years. They had been doing so much before then, like they were already so well positioned. They were already talking about all of this and had been working on capacity building and um, SCL programming partnerships. So if Masco, if a department like ours is seeing that it's not enough to meet the need.
Right.
Right. Then you take that back and say it's really important. And again, the partnerships into the community makes it does provide a little bit more equity because it doesn't matter which school. There's not, you know, it's the kids, all the kids.
So I would make two suggestions. One, it might make sense for us to come back in the fall. I mean, after the dust settles and we see where we're at with the budget and start thinking about the next cycle. And Costas can tell us how much more money we need to add in the next cycle.
And then you double.
But even, but even before that, it would be really helpful, given the fact that you have been working to build capacity. If you can help us to understand where we can put some money to support that. So, so, and, and what I mean by that, so I'm not ambiguous is, you know, is it more professional development? Or is it more people? Or is it some combination? And you've been living it. So we'd love to hear from you where we can plug in some of those supports in this budget.
All right. Bobby, thank you. Everybody, I'm sure everybody has your email addresses and phone numbers and um, and we'll, I'm making a note for potentially talking in the fall. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our middle school, wait, is it? Yes. Our middle school uh, principal report. I know Dr. McManus is super excited to follow that.
Gotta say hi to him before. I am gonna say hi to him right after he rises in seventh grade.
Watch out.
And you're talking. Okay, my mom's open. Okay, hi, everyone.
Hi.
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 Uh, hard to top the last. Anyway, I'll get going on our school report for tonight. So to start with the general update, March is the longest month of the year, days off. We're all looking forward to the spring. Uh, it's mud season, you know, all that good stuff. So we're, we're getting through it though. Um, we recently had a blue and yellow day in support of Ukraine, so the students wore the colors blue and yellow to school. Um, so that was a nice way to show solidarity. There's sunflowers up all over the um, halls and classrooms around the middle school as well. So as awful as it is um, for the war over there, we are um, you know, raising some uh, solidarity at, at Masco in the middle school and, and um, thinking about that. Uh, at the end of the month, MCAS begins on March twenty-ninth. I know that the students are really looking forward to that. We are back to two tests per subject this year, as I had mentioned last time. So we'll be back to the regular MCAS, so to speak, fully in person, obviously. Um, so that's coming up. And I have to say that things really do feel normal around the building now. We've had masks off. Um, or as a, you know, requirement for about a month or so, well, not quite a month, it was late after vacation, but um, feels like it's been, you know, a good amount of time now and there's still a handful of students that are wearing them. But most people are not. So that's been, that's been good. Um, course selection for seventh and eighth graders is ongoing right now. The eighth graders are actually just wrapping up their course selections. Uh, for high school between the electives that they're available um, to take and then their um, levels that they'll be going into next year. Seventh graders, we have a course selection program for them on Monday and assembly. It's very short. Um, but I go through the process for them in what classes they can choose uh, in eighth grade and they'll be doing that. Um, we're also planning for the end of year events. We have a field day for both grades, two separate days for them that we'll be hosting in the spring. It was a big hit last year, so we're gonna do that again. Uh, the eighth grade Canoeby Lake trip will be brought back this year. They haven't gone as an eighth grade in two years. So that'll be the first time they're going um, in a couple of years. So that will be good. Um, the eighth grade student council is planning a dance slash celebration for the end of the year. We haven't had a school dance um, again in you know, at least two years. So that will be a, a new event for the middle school, coming back uh, for people to remember it before. And then of course, we're planning our moving on ceremony, which will be the last days. We're looking forward to all those things coming up. There's a couple of other uh, events as well. There'll be a science um, night and we have a middle school musical production that the students will be putting on in May. They started audition, they've already auditioned, they've started rehearsing for that. So we're looking forward to those things coming up and a lot of them coming back for the first time in the last couple of years. So the sixth, seventh grade transition is ongoing. We mailed home registration packets to the sixth grade families. Uh, World Language Department and Gina Hearn will be visiting the upper elementary schools to talk about languages and choices that students can make. Um, and she's bringing a few teachers with her and she's also bringing some students, both middle school students and high school students. So that the younger children can see the progression of world language here at Masco. And you know, how they can take it for all six years if they want to. Um, so that's something that I think will be great to provide that outreach and we're also hoping to um, generate a little bit more interest in French and Chinese uh, as the two languages that don't have as many students enroll in them as we do with Spanish. Um, I met with the upper elementary principals for lunch last week to discuss the timeline and also bringing students uh, up to Masco for a visit. The sixth graders, they're gonna come for a visit. We'll do an assembly with myself and Mr. Monigal and then they're gonna do a campus tour. Um, check out the interior and exterior of the school. Uh, so that's coming up uh, early June, the first week, but we're already starting to plan it now. And it really helps to get them used to the larger building, joining up with the two other towns, obviously. And um, just helping them get used to the whole Masco experience that they'll be coming into. Obviously, last year was very different. We, we kind of put together a virtual transition experience for them. But you know, there's only so much you can do when you're virtual. So I'm looking forward to doing it for real and kind of the right time, right way this year. So that's coming up as well. So mindfulness, you heard our student representative from the high school talk about this. So Dr. Chris Willard came in and spoke with students about mindfulness. As a teenager and how to practice it in everyday life. He did two presentations. So he did one with the high school and then one with us in the middle school. It's about forty-five minutes with students and then it was followed by a breakout session with the high school and middle school um, student group. It was a smaller group that was composed of student council members. Also in the middle school are Project Three Fifty-One students. So students found it to be really helpful, I think. He did some exercises with them on mindfulness and the kids that I talked to later that day in lunch said that they enjoyed it and they found it to be helpful. That was great. And um, I'm glad that we were able to bring them in. A couple of fun photos here for you. Uh, if they come up, they were all set earlier in my presentation. Anyway, they're not there.
Actually, that photo I showed last time, but it was from one of these cells.
I had some good photos in here. I had um, some classrooms. I had um, a picture from Dr. Willard's presentation. Uh, I had a few others, so I'm not sure what happened. So anyway.
In your, maybe in your memo, we can look at your site.
Yeah, we could. Or when this is posted up on the school committee site, it'll be in there. But yeah, I'll make sure to put some photos in the memo this week, so. Sorry about that.
Have any questions? Comments?
I'm hearing all the normal things.
Yeah.
It's really inspiring.
Yeah, yeah. It's been, it's been good. Um, the, the seventh grade course selection assembly on Monday is an assembly. Which is nice.
Assembly is an assembly. It's awesome.
Assemble.
I've been thinking about how like last year was your first year here, right? So you're finally probably doing some of the things you've been thinking you probably were gonna do from.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. And last year we were figuring, figuring out how we were gonna pull all these different things off virtually and this year we can actually do it, which is, is nice.
Good.
Yeah, it's been good.
Can I ask, but you mentioned the science night. Is that something new? I'm trying to remember if I, if I did that when my kids were in middle school.
This is my first year going through things like for real last year.
Everything's new to him.
I think they did do something in the past. I'm not exactly sure what it was.
It's like a showcase of some kind.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I don't remember.
I remember Dylan, I think, did something like this.
Yeah. There was a science fair at least in, in the high school.
Yeah, nineteen, twenty, or eighteen, nineteen.
Twenty in the middle.
I think the middle school did a, did a science curriculum night where, with, with kids doing demonstrations for.
It's, it's eighth grade based daily. Um, I know Yvonne Young is putting it up, but once I know more, I can search, certainly share that with you. We're just trying to get some dates on the calendar at this point, so we're not overlapping too much.
What's the place?
Uh, once on this island. I've seen it before. I don't know, most schools, so it's, it's actually um, what The Little Mermaid was based off of. So. I don't know. The similarities are not exact, but.
Thank you. I think we're good. I think.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come and participate. Do you need chaperones? For any of the fun stuff?
She has lots of time on her hands.
What are you gonna be a chaperone?
Yeah, it's like.
No, like things like the dance and.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm joking. I'm joking.
I'm joking.
You find yourself up, you are admitted.
I'm certain my daughter would kill me.
I know.
Wouldn't it be nice to have a friend spy?
I sent my pictures of my son at the senior overnight post-graduation party.
Good.
I remember.
All right, sorry, we're getting giddy. Okay, now we're moving on to, um, Dr. Harvey with the appointment of the new assistant superintendent for next year.
Okay. So I'm, uh, tonight asking for the, the school committee's approval for the appointment of Lynn Bennett, uh, as to the position of assistant superintendent for student services for the Mascanomit Regional School District. Uh, and this appointment will be effective July first of twenty twenty-two. Uh, Lynn is currently the administrator for special education at Arlington High School in Arlington, Massachusetts. She's held this position since two thousand fourteen. Uh, prior to working in Arlington, Ms. Bennett has been an evaluation team chair in the Havre School System, uh, the principal of Wayside Academy in Framingham, Massachusetts, uh, the director of, uh, the family and student support team at the Boston Renaissance Charter School, and the director of student services in the Danvers Public Schools. Uh, she's also a licensed clinical social worker. Uh, Ms. Bennett holds a bachelor's science degree from Bridgewater State University, uh, master of social work degree from Simmons University, and a certificate of advance, advanced graduate studies in educational leadership and special education administration from Cambridge College. Uh, Ms. Bennett made a site visit to Mascanomit in February, uh, and at the beginning of March, the members of the executive leadership team and I made a visit to Arlington High School to talk with Ms. Bennett's colleagues regarding their experiences working with her. Through the interview process, several themes emerged regarding Ms. Bennett. She's a competent program and administrator who understands the legal complexities of the special education system in Massachusetts and is able to develop and implement systems and processes that ensure compliance with state laws and regulations. She's also a strategic thinker who looks to develop a complementary portfolio of programs that meet the needs of her students. She's a team player who fully understands that changes a process, that new initiatives need constant monitoring and fine tuning, and that faculty need her support in order to be successful. Also fully committed to developing the social emotional needs of all of her students, of all students in general. I look forward to Lynn joining our leadership team and bringing her skills and her passion for serving the needs of all students to Mascanomit. Uh, and Lynn's here.
Yeah, welcome. Welcome.
So according to.
Congratulations and welcome.
The state law works as I make the appointment. The school committee needs to approve that appointment.
They make a motion to approve it.
Cannot unreasonably withhold their, their approval, so.
Can we make, can I make a motion to approve the appointment of Lynn Bennett?
We have a motion from Tasha.
I'll second.
Bill seconds. And I don't need a whole call for this.
Nope.
Okay, so all in favor of appointing, um. Lynn Bennett, thank you. I shouldn't have done that. Lynn Bennett to the position of assistant superintendent. Uh, I say I, raise your hand. Any opposed or abstentions? All right, unanimously approved. Sorry for stumbling over that a little bit.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Happy to be a part of the team.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if you want to offer anything more. Did you, did you come wanting to share any words, or are you happy to submit for tonight? If you had come, like, prepared to want to say anything?
Yeah, if you're gonna say anything, just so you can get on the mic.
You came, so it'd be nice.
This is the official place?
Yeah. The podium. It smells like the microphone.
First, thank you. Um, I had shared with Mike and Jeff and maybe Joe and I think Phil did too. Um, that the process was really intentional, the search process, and I, I want to say thank you for that because, um, it taught me how you really elevate the work that you do here at Masco. And, um, I initially came into the, the process wanting to know two things in my life, like, why now am I looking and why Masco? And, um, I learned kind of through my experience that I have three pillars around education and your, uh, vision twenty twenty-five. He's, just it, it melded beautifully with it, and that has a lot to do with the social emotional piece, which is.
We were talking about it earlier today.
The representatives about the relationship between students and teachers, and teachers have a lot, a lot of, uh, bandwidth they have to hold on to to support the students in the classroom. But that's done through amazing rigor and academic excellence, and that we also need to start making our curriculum really relevant to the students that are in the seats in the classroom. Um, if I took a look at the vision twenty twenty-five and, and you actually speak exactly to that, you talk about membership, you talk about all students accessing, and then you also talk about the, uh, social behavioral health of our students, and then you talk about, you know, bringing a world-class or continuing to bring a world-class education. So I, I, I felt like, um, it's been a beautiful match in this, and it has been a wonderful experience, a little anxiety provoking, I will. But well worth it, and so I thank you. I thank you from this, from the bottom of my heart. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Well, welcome for working with you. All right, um, I think you are ready to dive right into your update, which is next on the agenda. It seems like you.
Not really.
No, it's not. I don't know. I'm sorry. The words are right in front of me and I just.
Just skipping over them.
Skipping over them.
Do it if you want me to.
Ready with something else, but, um, but we can, we can do the next thing on the agenda, which is the, um, superintendent's evaluation timeline update. So we had talked about this in the fall, um, and I, um, didn't get this together in time to link it in the agenda, but it will be part of the meeting records, and I emailed it to you guys so you can access it while I'm talking about it, if you want to. What I did is I basically took the timeline that we talked about in the fall, which had a couple of tentative things in it and updated them. So just to walk through it briefly, um, in October, the, Dr. Harvey set his improvement goals for the year. They were approved and by us using with, um, the standards and focus indicators that he identified in those goals. And then October through now, uh, there, I consider every meeting we have to be part of the demonstrating of progress toward those, the intended outcomes throughout the year, um, as well as what he will be, um, pulling together into his self-assessment. But these are the months that that kind of data is being collected. So in June, uh, it's when Mike will share his summative self-assessment with us. Uh, last time he did this, I think it was like an eighteen-page document or so, so I don't know how long it took. But, um, but we get that and it'll have, um, probably a million links to, uh, evidence of things and, um, for anyone who hasn't done it before, um, that are linked again to, uh, the goals that we agreed upon. And the committee will then have a couple of weeks to look that over, and there is a rubric from D E S I that I will turn into a Google survey with just the identifier, the focus indicators that we're looking at to make it a little less confusing, because the rubric has like forty points, you know, so this can now funnel it down to the ones that we had identified and just have the questions related to those. So over those two weeks, you all, uh, will provide your evaluations through that survey, and then I'll accumulate all of the, um, assessments from everybody individually into one summative assessment to be presented by the end of July. And I did just check in just in case, like Joe isn't able to be here tonight, but if there's, um, he's not running for reelection this year, so it is, uh, permissible through, according to D E S I and M A S C, to incorporate feedback from anyone who's just recently. The timeline, we originally were thinking to try to do before election season, just so that it's people that have been with Mike this whole year, but, um, it's just not a good idea to push it that fast, so we can still collect that information from anyone who was just recently retired from the committee, um, as part of the evaluation process. And then we can use that to set new goals over the summer. I had a couple of notes to consider, for us to just consider and think through and to see if you have any questions or feedback on. One is what I just mentioned about the guidance of permitting recently retired members to contribute, uh, and the process of using a Google survey that I just talked about as a new, hopefully more efficient way of getting everybody's evaluations organized into a summative assessment. Uh, and then I did, um, I took, so Mike set his improvement goals, kind of using our school committee goals as a starting point. And when I went and just looked at those goals, I went ahead and I did a couple of small revisions because, and I'm showing them to you, they're not approved by everybody. This is sort of my version of a revised goals, um, because we did not anywhere in our goals include anything about keeping school open during a pandemic this year. I think when we set them over the summer, we were all very much feeling that, um, that moment that we all had, there was those couple of months.
It was like five days.
It was like a week, yeah.
Yeah. But a bit of time over the summer when, um, I think we all really hope that it, it would be how it is to now, today, from September on, and as we all know, that's not what happened. So I just wanted to share them with you and see if, um, if you want to kind of re, approve them as a revised, updated version, um, or at least just acknowledge that, um, this is sort of what we would be focusing on. The only change really is in the fourth, we had, we had four sections. We had, the first section was progress towards vision twenty twenty-five. The second was restorative community engagement. And I kind of highlighted things, oh, I did two things. Hold on, I'm sorry. I'll go through them all. The third was capital improvement and investment plan, and the fourth was maintaining core school committee responsibilities. And I, in the revised version, there's two things that I wanted to try to do. One is kind of revise it into a multi-year goals because, uh, some of these things didn't make sense to really tackle this year considering the competing demands of the requirements of, um, having school run during the pandemic and all the protocols that that required. And then the other, and, and then I highlighted things that I thought might be the priorities for this year versus over the three-year timeframe. And then the other is on number four, I just reordered them a little bit so that we, and I added the first one, which was supported, I added support administration to keep schools running safely during continuation of COVID-nineteen pandemic, prioritizing the safety and well-being of students and staff during in-person schooling according to public health and state guidance. And then I, I think I just put the other ones in a little bit slightly different sequence so that it kind of flowed better. So I'm sharing this with you because I think it's connected with how we will do our evaluation if, if you look at our goals as part of the process. And, um, and then, but really what we're focusing on will be Mike's goals. Right, so I want to see what you guys think about that process and hear if you have any feedback on anything I've just shared.
I have a clarification question. So the goals that you did some draft revisions to were ours or Mike's?
Ours.
Is this something that needs to be approved, the revisions? And if so, should it be next time? Like, kind of, as we do with policy, kind of, you know, let people digest it and see if there's any questions, or does it not need to be approved, or?
I, can I?
So I have this thing about goals that are changed at the end of a year. To me, it's like, many times, things change and you can't do, you can't accomplish your goals, and that's part of the evaluation at the end of the year. I, this happens, this has happened before several times, like, that wasn't achieved, but this was done instead. That would be my preference, um, rather than changing the goal. It just seems like a futile.
So I just want to make it clear, though, that the only thing I changed is.
Is ours, right?
Yeah, in ours, the only thing that I changed is adding keep schools open and labeling that, them as multi-year. And it's not changed, it's, I don't know how to title it, because it's not approved by us, but it's, um, I wanted to bring it to our attention that, that we didn't include that, and that the year previous, we didn't set any other goals aside from.
Who won?
Yes, yeah. Aside from keep, make school happen.
I have a problem with.
So I just wanted to acknowledge that somehow.
Acknowledging it.
But that was my way of trying to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to officially do it.
Yeah, that's, that's also fine, I just, it's my way of trying to bring it to our attention.
But this is our, this is, well, for evaluating us, I guess, which we don't do. Um, like, and it's kind of, right.
It's kind of different than us of.
And evaluating Mike's.
Maybe we should.
Yeah.
I think it's in the policy that we're.
I think it is too.
Yeah, evaluate yourself.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Through how?
Frequently or regularly, rather? I think.
A ten year.
Really?
A ten year.
Twenty years.
Joking too.
But if I could just, just throw out one comment, I, I, I think Carolyn's point is a, is a good one. The, um, yes, we had a pandemic again that we hadn't anticipated. We can, that's certainly known to everyone, we don't need to retroactively change our, add that to our goals because we, you know, we actually spent a lot of time, um, uh, the administration mostly spent a lot of time, you know, doing that, and then our job was to support them. So I, I, I don't feel a need to add that. The idea of it being a multi-year goal, that's actually something that's worth discussing, um, to me, anyway.
I thought we actually had discussed things as a multi-year goal. Like, I remember when we talked about capital planning or that, that we didn't expect anything this year, we expected a timeline or, you know, something like that. Wasn't that part of our conversation, that it was a multi-year process? I don't know about the other ones so much, but it's like, you don't need to do it this year, we just need to.
Yeah, certainly.
Talk about.
That particular bucket of stuff, that was certainly a multi-year.
We talked about it, but the label at, the title at the top does not imply that, right? But we redo the goals every year.
Yeah.
It really is an annual goal, right? We're rewriting them every year.
Maybe when we do it again, we could talk about creating a multi-year plan rather, but I, I kind of agree with the sentiment that it doesn't seem like best practice to me to go back and change. Even if it's, you know, stuff we would all support, it doesn't seem like.
It's an acknowledgement.
Idea, yeah.
You know, stuff happens.
Right. Um, so let's not change anything, but can we just acknowledge that that is something that, when we're, you know, to recognize that and think about, just have that in our minds? The other question I had on here was just about the, if there's any other further thoughts on types of evidence that may be most beneficial or for a constructive evaluation process. Anything that Mike collects for us as evidence has to be mutually agreed upon. So if anyone had any other thoughts about kinds of things that you're hoping to see or hear, um, I would say you can communicate them to Mike, um, so that you have what you need, what you need to be able to conduct your part of the evaluation.
Communicate separately or here or?
I think either way, if you have something off the top of your head. I don't, I'm not, I don't want to put anybody on the spot tonight.
Yeah.
More to just mention it so that.
I haven't read this carefully enough to remember if it's here, might already be here, but I was thinking that, um, feedback from the team would be really useful to, from your team would be really useful. I don't know if that's something that you do as a matter of course, or that, if it's in here, but, you know, or how much effort that would require, but that would, to me, be useful.
I would agree.
Thanks.
Have some fun with.
Don't start laughing.
He's over here chucking. Having fun with that.
Anonymous, no.
Then maybe we can guess.
Subject to this process.
Thinking.
Maybe we just play a game.
Said this.
The high ones was in a, in a three hundred and sixty-degree review thing, and I, they said, don't read ahead, and I read ahead, and I got all upset, and then it turned out I was reading the sample. It was like a fake one. I love you as terrible manager and I was like, oh my gosh. So don't read ahead.
All right. So thank you for that. If there's, so if anyone thinks of anything, I guess I just wanted to point out that to communicate that expectation sooner than later to Mike because he'll be working on his, like it takes time to develop his self-assessment for us. So he's probably going to be starting to work on it very soon to get it to us for the end of, the middle of June. Or what time? Yeah, we said June. So just to communicate that now versus later. Any other questions on that? We can move on. If not.
Did we talk about throwing out some good day, July dates?
We did not yet.
Okay. At our meeting, I feel like we talked about like one July date.
Should we wait for the next? So we know who's on the next committee? We ran into that problem before, when we didn't talk to the people that were newly elected to.
Right. The concern was just that people are planning vacations.
Okay.
If we wait till the end of May, their vacations are planned. So we can always change it, but I don't know.
That's true. That's what we ran into last.
I would, I would prefer to have it on the calendar now. Right, I'm a planner.
And you need a vacation.
And I need, yeah.
I feel like we were talking. Was that it? Yeah. Yeah. We were talking about July 20th.
That was the day we were talking about Wednesday, July 20th.
Sounds good. And then, that's right. Potentially August 17th for the retreat.
Yep, me too.
Maybe I'll just send an email.
Not August.
Yeah, not, I agree.
Not August 17th? Okay.
That's the one week my whole family has nothing.
This is what happens for email.
That's a skill looking. So why don't I send an email about looking at our schedules for the summer so that we can at least have options of dates? So that we have something on the calendar for whoever's already here to work with when we schedule our next, we create our new calendar so we're not vacation, on vacation during very important. All right. So now I think we can move on to the superintendent's update.
So I also want to offer my congratulations to the cast and crew of the High School Production of Grease. Congratulations to Mr. Brian Pereira, Mr. Brian Ocock, and Mr. Miz, Marcia Kilgallen, for their work with our students on the production. I had the pleasure of attending on opening night on Thursday, and it was great to see a full house enjoying all the amazing work of our students. It was really great to see everybody back together again. So congrats to all of, all of the cast and crew. On, and then on Monday, March 14th, Assistant Superintendent Jeff Sands and District Treasurer Genie Giocchio delivered the school committee's adopted FY23 operating and debt service budget to the treasurers of Boxford, Middleton, and Topsfield. The FY23 general operating expense after offsets budget is $37,574,382, which is an increase of $853,893 or 2.3% over the current year's budget. The adopted budget includes funding for level services or continuation of all current programming, plus an increase in staffing to bring our current part-time drama teaching position to full-time. The adopted budget also includes the funding necessarily, necessary to implement an across-the-board 25% reduction in student athletic and extracurricular fees. The final step in the approval process for the Masco FY23 budget will be approval of the voters at annual town meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, May 3rd in Topsfield and Tuesday, May 10th in Boxford and Middleton. And we have more information on the budget for people who are interested on our website.
I can come up with a bunch real quick. I just want to say thank you again to our administrative team and people who got you guys the information and Jeff as taking it and all of that. I feel like we really put out a good product this year and I feel like I, you know, thoroughly understood what was going into it. Because I feel like the presentations and everything are really explained, or really helped explain it to people who don't love budgeting to begin with, like Jeff does. So I want to thank you all for, for all that work that went into that and keeping it at the, you know, low rate of 2.3. It's phenomenal.
And then last up, we want to make sure we thank Bill Hodges, Student Government Advisor Ben Hanchett, and Music Department Head Randy O'Keefe for organizing the St. Patrick's Day Concert for our senior citizens in Boxford, Middleton, and Topsfield on Tuesday, March 29th. Seniors will be treated to performances from our Masconomet High School Band and chorus and a boxed lunch. And we want to make sure we thank Joe Champa for a generous donation to support that lunch for our seniors. So thank you all for your work on this and looking forward to it. Thank you. That's what I have.
Any other questions?
It's a normal update.
Yeah.
No five-letter words on it.
I was searching for things. So it's kind of nice.
I have one question, just mostly because I don't want to forget and I just want to say it out loud so other people help me remember. I do hope that once, on the assumption that our towns approve this budget and fees do become reduced, that we can have an updated publication on the website because that, like we had in the past, explaining that.
So you're talking about the, the publication from like summer of 19? Actually, somebody on the committee wrote that. I'm looking at Carolyn.
That was a committee publication.
So made up in community relations. So let's just, somebody flag that and help me remember that once it's approved, I think we do need to communicate it so that people understand that it happened and how it structured.
That we can, I can definitely publish it, but yeah, it came, the text ring came from the school committee.
And I know the new numbers are in the budget details, but you know, that's something I want to make sure that gets posted once it's approved so that
I'll put it on the agenda for community relations next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Speaking of community relations, subcommittee reports is next and you're first.
Okay, we haven't met since our last school committee meeting, but I did want to let everyone know, including the subcommittee, that I reached out to the environmental club at Mike's session. Mike forwarded me the email about
Environmental club is plant trees.
Yeah. I reached out. They, they're doing little trees, but yeah.
Fill that one down.
And also, so I reached out to them, to the leadership of that group and said, would you be interested in partnering with us? And they said, absolutely, that would be fantastic. They'd be happy to help republizize it among students, et cetera. So they said, just let them know what we need. So we'll meet again as a committee at the beginning of April, I think it's April 13th, actually. And I have reached out to some vendors about a tree, about the community tree and I know we had talked, Patty, about looking for a location. I don't know the campus well enough to know.
Walk together, we could tour the campus.
Yeah, okay.
Walk around, pick a few spots and then
Yeah, because the
Pick a few places and then we can
No, no.
We could check it out.
Yeah.
They have a few places.
Yeah.
If you time it right, you might get a boxed lunch.
Bring my puppy and get
It'd be worth it depending on what's in there, yeah.
I am sure that the students would love to help with that.
Yeah, they were really enthusiastic about it.
But to pick a spot.
Oh, to pick a spot, yeah.
Survey them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I
Well, maybe you guys can pick like their five sides and they can
Other on it. Other eye on them. Yeah, okay, so that's it.
And then they can come up and see if they can come up with a better name than the community tree.
Colligate that.
Really. Copyright that.
Can I share something? You know, you were laughing about the tree. Actually, we visited Ground Zero this past weekend. And there was a tree that was pulled from under the rubble and they took that tree to a nursery, brought it back to life. It got almost destroyed and killed in a flood at the nursery. They brought it back to life again. And it's sitting there right in the main gallery near the, near the pools. With wreaths supporting Ukraine right now. So this tree might start out as one thing, but it might turn into something much bigger later, you know? So it is, it is a really good idea.
Yeah, that's cool.
Terry's credit?
That's really easier than T-shirts. But yeah, no, that's great. That's cool. I didn't realize that was there. So I thought you were going to say they have seedlings from it. Maybe someday they will. Like a
Probably.
Memorial, yeah. That's okay.
It was starting to bud. I should have ripped a couple.
Oxford harvested seedlings from the tree at Ground Zero.
Thomas, the news. Uh, April 13th. I'll send everybody an email.
We won't, oh, there's something for budget today.
Yes, yeah, so that since we're not having any more budget meetings, subcommittee meetings probably until the fall, that we should approve the minutes as they were. So our last meeting was February 9th and that's when we had some local select, select board people and FinCom members come, but we were supposed to approve that, the January 26th meeting minutes then. But what was left off of the minutes were all the department heads that came to the January 26th meeting. So on the agenda, I have the meeting minutes from January 26th with the department heads written in as well as the meeting minutes from February 9th that took for us and because I was not here and Mike also took and they are combined into one document. So I hope my fellow subcommittee members had an opportunity to look at it and if anybody has any problems with the minutes, let me know or make a motion to
I'll move to accept the minutes of both meetings.
Second, second from Melissa. All in favor?
And I can vote even if I wasn't on one. Okay, so all four subcommittee members, do we need special minutes from the subcommittee or is this thing on? As long as
Let's get that down, right?
So we're good.
That's it. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for doing that. And with that, we close the budget, I hope. And you won't be having to hear from me for a while on that. You'll always hear.
Thank you. Anything on inter-racism?
Just that we haven't met since the last meeting, but our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April, April 4th at 6:00 PM at the central office.
Thank you. I should have checked. Terry, you're continuing on Zoom, right? Just to keep it accessible for community?
Yeah, if it's still okay through, well, it's still okay with the state.
Yeah, it is through the summer now.
It makes sense, I think, for community members to come. So yes, okay, thanks.
Policy?
So we had a meeting tonight. One of the things we discussed is restarting the process to review the this mask is recommending and we hope to present Section B at a later meeting. So I will touch base with Zilly and Tasha about getting it on the agenda. And there will be a couple of things probably coming up. There's been some, Patty did a civil rights update and there's some policy changes that result from just changes in, in law that will be presented to the school committee at some point as well as changes to policy IKF graduation requirements. So those will all be discussed and brought to the full school meeting.
Okay, so you were kind of
What's that?
You were exploring those?
Yeah, just looking at what they were. We didn't make any decisions, but
Okay, so just let me know when you need them on the agenda for the full committee. Thank you. And do you have a meeting scheduled?
We have reached out to Dorothy, or Terry has reached out to Dorothy Presser from MASK and once we have some dates, we'll, we'll schedule a meeting.
Thanks. She's the one that was helping you with like those, back to normal process. So, okay, yes.
So can I just ask about the, the warrant articles? Because that was you guys, right? Like, so I saw some emails floating around about Topsfield tweaking the wording. Are we all in sync?
We're good. Yeah.
So what we gave to Boxford is what should be
I gave all three town administrators
The same.
Language, the exact same language last week.
Last week.
They all have it.
All right.
The, the tweaked language. Are you untweaked or whatever, but?
Yeah, Topsfield tried to
It wasn't the original language. It's now.
They all have the same language and it'll pass muster. Put it that way.
Well said.
So we, so Boxford is having a meeting on Monday night. They, I think they copied you on the email, like whether you could attend, but like, did, had you talked to Matt about the?
I, I sent it to Matt and got a response from him that said, so nine or six hundred and nine, however many articles there are, right? And
Okay.
He said, yes. So we think he received and
Can you send me a copy of that?
Sure.
Just to clarify, that came out as work as liaisons and not the policy subcommittee.
When did you work on the wording though? I thought that was in the policies.
Well, we approved it and then we sent everything as liaisons to the towns. So we weren't creating the I just wanted to make a clarifying statement.
Yeah, no, that's good.
The policy, we didn't, we didn't have a meeting to discuss anymore. It was part of our liaisoning.
Yeah, and when Topsfield tried, when they tweaked something, that's, I just asked Mike to be the central communicator so that
No, that's great. I just, now I'm being asked to talk to our town about it. So if I could see it, that's
We have the most up-to-date one. Thanks.
There is.
Just language details.
Well, and obviously they do matter.
We found Eldar.
I'm just saying it's immaterial as far as our decisions. It's just making sure that the towns all approve the same exact thing so that it counts.
Right, yeah, it had nothing to do with the changes that we approved. It was more of introductory language.
Yeah, Topsfield made some changes to how the changed language gets presented. Because they, well, we, our document had everything highlighted and I can't go in a printed warrant, so they had to make everything bold in italics. And then they tried to play around with the second article, which wasn't okay. So we fixed it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Negotiations update.
Yep, so we had our first meeting on Monday, someday this week, and it's only Wednesday. So, yeah, with the one that's the professional administrator's unit. And we were able to come to ground rules relatively quickly. They presented us with a proposal meeting again two weeks from this past Monday. We have a few meetings set up. I think that's, anybody else?
Thank you. And I don't know if there's any liaison updates.
Middleton's budget hearing and warrant review is Thursday, the 31st, March 31st. And the current latest timeline of the municipal complex is for groundbreaking in 14 months in occupancy in the fall of '25. I mention this because even though the bonding, the project is in place, the visual of people seeing the construction will, has an impact on people being asked for other capital needs.
Gotcha. Money actually looks like something physical versus this ethereal thing that
And people tend to forget about things until they see them happening and then they start worrying about how much it's going to cost, even though the cost has already been approved. So, you know, it, it impacts, you know, you have to approach it differently. So I'm just or anybody else in town that wants to propose a project has to keep the psychology of that in mind and act accordingly.
Yeah, thank you. The other Thank you. Okay, so we can move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from February 62nd, March 7th, and March 9th. So we have warrants in the amount of $2,809,532.36. And we have a very generous donation. And we have a very generous donation from Baseball Boosters of $22,000. I think it was for fencing. Did I read that? Do I remember what I read?
Yeah, temporary fence.
A temporary fence. Are we usable, temporary fence?
Yeah, it's the outfield fence that creates the outfield boundary for a homerun, for example.
Why is it temporary?
Well, because it's in the middle of the field.
We take it down for soccer.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's a really unbelievably great product and generous donation.
Absolutely. I'll say my thank yous after we approve it, or accept it. So unless anyone needs to break anything out, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh my God. Tasha moves.
I'll second.
Carolyn. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions passed unanimously. So now I will thank the Baseball Boosters for that very generous donation. Thank you. Now, I think I would like to, do I forget?
Make a motion.
I am moving to a turn. Thank you. I am moving to a turn into executive session for the purpose of strategy relative to collective bargaining with the Masconomet of professional administrators. Executive session purpose number three. I have determined that holding this discussion in open session may have a detrimental impact on the district's bargaining position. The committee will not return to open session after the conclusion of executive session.
Yes.
Second. Tasha seconds. So roll call for that adjournment. Melissa?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
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 Natasha?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And I'm a S. So we are adjourned at 8:53.